So I'm gonna turn it back over to the
Thanks so much.
My desk. Front office.
Uh so the proposed capital non recurring or C N R plan starts on page one hundred and seventy eight of the budget book. Um unlike the C I P, we are not required by charter to put together a six year plan, although that is something we've been doing um for about five or six years now, so we do have you um like that whole plan. Um the items on that plan are typically between ten thousand dollars and two hundred and fifty, that threshold before they get to capital. Um these are things like vehicles, equipment, uh technology replacement. Um there are a lot of projects on the plan, I think there are fifty in year one uh for fiscal year twenty five, they're grouped by department on the slide um on the screen. So you can um see the detail obviously in in the budget book on the six year plan. Um and what I was gonna do is quickly review the funding sources for this plan before um we jump into questions, the same way we did the the capital. Um so you'll hear a lot, uh we talk about a lot this traditional payback um funding mechanism. Um this is the base amount of um general fund funding that we have for the C N R plan every year. Um for many years, that number has been four hundred and sixteen thousand two hundred and fifty. Um structured as a five year payback, which is a mechanism that we can certainly explain and will better than I can. Um but as you can see on the six year plan, if you're looking at that in the budget book, we have a lot of smaller capital needs. Um the the total amount of the projects across the six years on that plan is sixteen point eight million, which is, you know, about two point eight million per year. So um the amount of, you know, cash available to to pay for those needs um is not sufficient. So we've, you know, a lot of the time end up deferring projects, which you'll see later in the our slide presentation. We cut about one point two million from year one and bump those out um to try to make this more manageable. But um the need is definitely there, so what we're proposing this year is to increase that top line, that base amount by three hundred thousand, uh which we can do by adding sixty thousand to the operating budget under that five year payback mechanism. Um stop there maybe and explain that before we kind of go into the other funding sources, which are kind of self-explanatory anyways. But this is a concept um that we want to spend some time on, just increasing that that traditional payback in our proposal for that.
Yeah, thanks. That that actually, did you wanna weigh in on that again?
So um you know Melissa talked about the four sixteen two fifty, when it was first implemented, there was four sixteen two fifty, it was paid for over five years. So you take the four sixteen two fifty, divided by five, you pay eighty three two fifty in one year. You pay eighty three two fifty in the next year, three to five years. So we're essentially suggesting or proposing that we increase this amount because of all of the C N R needs. And like Melissa said, you'll see a lot of the deferrals in the upcoming slides. So we would take, we would add another three hundred thousand dollars to the traditional payback. Divide that by five, it would cost our operating budget sixty thousand dollars to get an extra three hundred thousand dollars. Um so basically looking for your policy guidance, if this is something that you support. I do have a um upcoming meeting that will be scheduled with the Board of Finance members to look at our reserves and paybacks and potential um ways to fund some of these things. Um this is one of the things that I will be talking to them about. So um if you are supportive of it, I will bring it up as a topic of discussion. If you're not, then just one thing off the table.
So I'd like, we I both of um we couple of us at least asked a question, I'd like to bring it up. And then I may ask defer to the um the finance, the board board members that are here to see if they wanna add any context today. Um the one question that I, well, a couple of questions that I have on that. First of all, we have more C N R needs, but then does that mean we need to cut some of the C N R needs instead of just paying for them out of money that we're borrowing to pay for? Would be one question I have. So we haven't gone through all the C N R needs, right? We haven't determined that all of those are critical, right? And that's gonna use up the seven hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So there is some give and take there until we make sure that these projects are critical for the for the town. Right?
Yeah, it's your prerogative what you wanna maintain and what you don't, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and and then the other thing that I I had trouble understanding until I looked at it and um I think you guys explained it, that you know four sixteen has been the amount we've had over the last, I don't know how many years, right? So we're 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 really kind of changing our policy here, and it sounds like it's our policy, not a B O S policy. True?
I don't know where it came from.
Um I don't think that it's a policy.
Yeah, not as traditional, but a policy, right?
It's just a practice.
A practice, okay. Um and then I guess what I'm saying here is basically we're we in in a year where we have little operating money, right? We're gonna add sixty K to the operating budget to borrow three hundred thousand dollars for projects that we may or may not be able to afford. So we're spreading that out over six years, five years, right? So that's a decision, if we even wanna do that, um i- if that's a good practice to do, right? I'm just asking. I don't know if any other people had questions or comments on that.
I have a question on it as well, when you answered um the question via email. Um you know, it says it provides a partial solution to the issue, so um what what are the other solutions?
So the
Say the rest of it.
Yeah, I think using
I I could take that one. I think that there, do we have a slide on what didn't make it into C N R?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
So so that that to Wendy's point and yours, I think they're all tied together. So maybe what we do is we we circle back to the issue uh to that issue after the board's got a fuller understanding of what we deferred. Because the other half of the partial solution is Wendy's answer, we don't do it. So it 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 gives us something. I I would just say that if you know, and and this is, I'm I'm new to this piece admittedly, but if it's good and it makes sense at four hundred and change, and that number hasn't been adjusted in some time, then it makes sense to me to 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 increase that number. Might be some debate about how much, uh but if it's de minimis, then it doesn't matter. Uh and uh you know, they landed on a number that made sense to me, so that's why it made it into the preliminary. Uh we're under pressure on C I P, we're under pressure on C N R, and we're under pressure on operating. So we have, for this board, you have your own three-legged stool. Uh and that's why, you know, I think we had very good questions earlier about did something get moved from C N R to capital? Yes, uh are are things being moved i- to to help take some pressure off the operating side, yes. Uh this is one of those triggers or pressure r- relief valves, if you will, that can help us, and so it should be considered. But maybe we circle back to it, Melissa and Amy, after we look at and and you know, we could do it now while it's up there, the deferred requests, uh
Well, you know.
Either way. It's sometimes helpful, I think, to see what didn't make it before you look at what did make it, uh but however your preferences.
Can I ask you a question? If the ones that didn't make it would have m- made a higher need, correct?
Right.
So so I I get that we didn't make it, but there's still a ton of projects in here that made it. Um so so seeing what didn't make it, just I I don't know how to explain how my thinking on that is like, I get that they didn't make it, but there's still a lot in here that may still not make it. So we shouldn't, shouldn't we just focus on this? Because this is already over what we would have budgeted had we stuck with the old payback?
Entirely up to you, if if if, I guess you're making the assumption that there's nothing that we cut that you would want in.
Okay, well, I guess that's a question for the for everybody to, if there's things that were cut cut that they would wanna include to put up against the projects that are in the list, right? Um I took these as your priorities, so I really didn't pay attention to the ones that were cut, to be honest, I don't think. Uh just see if I have any notes, but if there's other people that did look at things that were that were cut.
Anyone need just a quick
Just I would take a quick look at it.
Sure.
Take a quick look at what's cut.
So essentially, all we do when we defer is we just bump it out a year most of most of the time. So that that's been the challenge with the C N R is that, you know, we don't cut things, we we bump them out because they're continuing to be in need. Um it's just figuring out where to fit them in the plan.
Okay.
Second slide.
Can I ask a question on the drainage improvements? Um is there, are there any issues with deferring that that could cause um further issues to road needs or?
I I I'd say of all things that were cut, that uh that's probably one of the biggest ones for for us because um in order to have good roads, you need to have good drainage. Um and what that funding has been historically used for is as we go through and we're gonna do a large drainage project, or I'm sorry, a large baby project, we make sure the drainage is good. On a typical road, that may mean just replacing um the existing catch basins. But more often than not, Sims Gird was built his old um farm roads that then got paved and not all of them are are fully engineered, so they don't have drainage systems that are complete. And that's most of the money that we would use to fix things.
Yeah, I I mean, I just see looking at the amount of rain and everything that we've had and issues with drainage and and the cracking that it it causes and very quickly, um it can get bad for roads, so just curious about that.
I think there's ever been a year that's gonna show drainage deficiencies. It's right now, residents are calling every day with, you know, they've never had water here and there. And this certainly isn't gonna fix it all, but we do have some antiquated systems that just can't handle it. And it is impacting some of it, so I I'm in agreeance with Tom. There's other things that are being cut here, but this is something that traditionally we've we funded it every other year. And it's um it's a work in progress. It's it's, it doesn't take much at the base of Pendleton Mountain to to redo the whole Ross Cobert to cost us sixty thousand dollars that that wasn't foreseen. That's that's just one simple project that came in the glass.
Any question on the intersection safety? Is that having anything to do with um, you know, traffic pattern, traffic flow? Cause a lot of people complain about the timing of the lights or whatever on, you know, five o'clock. Um is is that any anything to do with that?
This this would, um we currently are using, um two years ago, we funded an intersection safety uh program. Kind of a a broad look at all of our intersections to see which ones had um either historical crash data that showed that there was an issue, or more often than not, because we are all in town. If we work in town and we work closely with police, identify intersections where perhaps there've been a number of close calls. And the purpose of this is to for ident- identify the most critical intersections, come up with conceptual plans if it's gonna be a large scale uh intersection replacement uh that we can then use to leverage grants in the future. And if there's small scale repairs, we would use some of those funds to do it with in-house repairs. If um there's one area in particular where there's essentially um a s- a small hillside, which is causing a sightline issue, that we're hoping this coming summer, we will um modify that, cut that that down to improve the sightline and therefore improve safety. That would be a small one. Other larger intersections, it would it would be setting us up for grants. Um but we are looking to have this repeat, a hundred thousand dollars every two years, and again, we'll push it out.
I do have a, I I always ask this question, Tom, the um like the safe, the str- safety, street safety, intersection side. There's, I I think there's still opportunities, and I don't know if we fit into this um through the Capital Region Council of Government for the um infrastructure B I L um bill, that there's a lot of funding that we can get through them for our Safe Streets for All programs if we apply for grants and things like that. And I I always ask this, but is there any way that we're eligible for these funds to pay for some of these safety projects? If we had somebody to do the grants?
Well, so like Tom said, someone is a design worker, uh the money I would go to a design work would set us up for those
Okay.
types of grants um and make us and allow us to be prepared for a shovel-ready type of grant, where we could say the design work's already done um or proof of concept is already ready. So a lot of us, we're we're just trying to prepare for those type of opportunities. I know a lot of the grants in the first few years that came out of there um out of federal government went to projects that were already designed or larger projects in communities um that checked the box from the equity and diversity kind of
Yeah.
And again, rarely have we had grants, especially through progress, that if we are eligible, we didn't apply for.
Okay.
Um but and some of this, again, is going from instead of a concept, it's preliminary design so that it's been vetted to a level that we feel much more comfortable moving forward with the process.
So we can get, if there's no more questions on what was deferred, uh we can go back to.
So we're we're gonna talk about the policy, I I are we gonna, because I do, I know the Board of Finance chair is here and I don't know if you guys have talked about this at all, you guys talked on the change in funding at all um for the traditional payback? Or is it, are we just kind of Marx presenting it here um? And does the Board of Ed do that too, or do they not do that? I'm just curious. Yes, I'm I'm asking the, if that's okay with everybody to ask the chair to weigh in on that.
No objection.
No objection.
Okay, so first of all, thank you. I do wanna commend Amy. I know she's working really hard to come up with creative ways, how are we gonna fund? Um that's just some background on the traditional payback. That was originally designed probably twenty years ago. And it was, the concept was like revolving fund. And as is typical, when you create a revolving fund, it has to be an initial capitalization to pay for it. Cause the idea behind a revolving fund is you have money, you borrow from it and pay it back over time. But the first time you do that, there has to be money there, right? And so most revolving funds require an initial capitalization. Over time, what can happen as you build that up over time, sometimes the initial capitalization is paid back. And sometimes it just is becomes part of additional um the payback period. At this point, nothing is presented, been presented to our board other than that concept. So we have not done a thorough evaluation of it. I think this is something that we should look at absolutely, but holistically over um the summer when we do policy reviews. The one thing about this, the traditional payback, it's three hundred thousand this year, you only owe sixty. So the question we'd have to understand is, is the plan then to do another three hundred next year? And in which case, your operating budget goes up to one twenty. If you do another three hundred next year, it goes up to one eighty, until that gets to a three hundred thousand. If it's not the plan and we're just doing this once, then it's sort of like an interfund loan. So from our perspective, we have two things we need to think about. One, is this the right thing to do as you do too? It will limit, it will increase your budgets over time, it will limit some other options, but it might give you some options. Uh we have not done that analysis, so one thing. The other thing that Mark, you might not have the history there, the four ten um payback. It's true, that has not increased, but in the last five years, we doubled that effectively. And the way we've done that for you, working collaboratively and with Amy, is we added the police cruisers. Those used to be in the C N R payback, now they're not, now they're in the operating budget. That increases the payback, that's about one eighty-five. We did that for police administration vehicles, that's fifty thousand. We did that for the plow truck, two hundred and sixty-one. We did that for materials recycling, community farm. We did that for I T tech programs and computer software for a hundred and twenty-one. So that four ten, over the last five years, is now nine hundred, but not with a payback. We just slowly incorporated them back into the operating budget. And that has been our plan, anytime there's grantless growth, we try and do that because we do think that that is more effective way than a complicated payback system. So am I totally against it? No, but I do think it needs quite a bit more vetting cause we need to make sure we're complying with the balanced budget requirement. There has to be something you're borrowing against. And also the anti-deficiency uh principles in budgeting that we have to deal with, the legal principles. And we have just not had the time to vet it. So if there is an issue that just, and I just speaking for myself, if there's something that hasn't had sufficient time for vetting, it should wait because what you don't wanna do is get in a situation during a tough budget cycle trying to come up with creative things, which is great, and I really applaud Amy and Melissa who worked on that. But to do it in a way without fully vetting the policy boards as to the implications of that choice in long term. The idea of the C N R payback was created at a time when the first selectmen at Board of Ed were not spending money. And there was, they were trying to encourage people to spend and not cut capital. We are in a very different situation today where we need to look for cuts. And so is this the time to add to it? I understand the need problem, and there's absolutely a need, and Amy has identified it very, very well, as has Melissa. So two, one things we've done to address that need is we use year-end savings now. Year-end savings come from conservative revenue assumptions and from savings in the operating budget. And anytime those exist, we put them in capital reserve. So five years ago, there was nothing in capital reserve. Now we put in between two or three percent. Why two or three percent? Why do we try and get to that number? We slowly worked up to that, why? Well, Massachusetts said, says statewide, towns should plan on year-end reserves at three to five percent, precisely to fund capital. So we follow the Massachusetts model. Westport uses the same model we do, and they target two percent of year-end funds to fund it. So five years ago, there was no funding for capital reserve. Now there's a dedicated source. Five years ago, it was four ten payback and nothing else, now there's another five hundred in the operating budget. So I think I do wanna commend the Board of Selectmen, the previous town manager, the Board of Finance who have, and the Director of Finance, who have worked so hard over time to be disciplined in our revenue assumptions so that we could take care of this outstanding problem. But it's all part of a comprehensive picture. So if we start tweaking one without thinking about it comprehensively, we I worry that we haven't vetted it to the degree we need to.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure.
I would just say, the the, and I don't disagree with anything the chair has in has said here, but the impact on the operating budget is sixty thousand.
Yep.
And it allows you to get three hundred some odd thousand into your C N R. You've gotta ask yourself, what are the costs that the town incurs by delaying and deferring? One of the things that I've tried to en- encapsulate in 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 my first budget frame is both on the operating side and on the capital side, what are the costs of not act? We are sitting here today at a time where the costs of not doing something are higher than they've ever been because inflation has been higher than it's been in thirty years. Because the impacts of the pandemic and other things have made it, as we heard earlier from our T P W director, uh we've seen cost overage on project after project after project. If we don't do something, and it doesn't have to be this, uh and we are all working collaboratively, but I will tell you, there is a opportunity cost in decisions that are made to defer things. And it's not, I don't have the skill set to display that, and I can't, I don't have a crystal ball. Uh but what we're struggling with in this budget cycle is uh can can we see some movement from our colleagues on the Board of Finance with respect to the revenue side? And yes, I think the answer has been more pleased to see those discussions are are being embraced. This is one of them, uh and it's uh, it does not have, in my view, it does not have a significant impact on the operating. So the idea to defer it a year while everybody talks about it. I think everybody should talk about it this summer, but I think it should be approved now. Uh and the answer, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, team, but the answer to the chair's question is, is there an intent to do this year after year? The answer is no. The intent is to do it this year, once faced, again, with everything we've said, a one point five million dollar drop in revenue, zero grantless growth, the last year's tax increase. If 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 we don't look at some of these innovative things, and I'm my hat's off to people, I was the one that came up with this idea, uh but there are four or five of them, a couple of them were mentioned in my budget messages as pressure release valves. And some of them are non-starters, uh and and some of them are red lines in the sand. But if we don't have a discussion about those big issues, and 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 maybe what we do is the board says, yeah, that we've looked at it and this is what we're gonna continue to do. We're gonna budget for revenues very conservatively. We're gonna follow the model that is Massachusetts. They don't do this in New York, and they don't do it in many municipalities in Connecticut. So we've gotta look to Massachusetts and a couple of municipalities in Connecticut to find the support for this. And yet, it's interesting to me because when we make other decisions, what do we do? We ask what our peer cities do. Whether it's the Gov H R thing and all of the H R things that we're working on with Personnel Sub, the questions that's that are always asked is, what does Avon do, what does Farmington do? You know, what do our surrounding towns do? But on something like this, we're gonna accept the fact that we're following the Massachusetts model. And I'm very respectful of the fact that it's been done. My budget message was clear, I respect the past practice, but I'm simply saying we need to take a look at it. Sixty thousand, we need it.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm I'm gonna let them speak, but I just wanted, so if if you're telling us to ask what other towns are doing, can we ask you to tell us what other towns are doing?
Well, I can tell you they're not following the Massachusetts model, number one.
Right.
And and number two, they they, and and the flip side of this is they may not have triple A bond rates either. So I'm I'm, again, I'm very respectful of both sides of the argument, but both sides need to be made. We're budgeting revenue extremely conservatively, and uh the the tax collection rate is something that the superintendent of schools brought up uh in his meeting uh between the Board of Ed and Board of Finance. Not something that we're gonna change or disturb, I totally get it. But when you when you cross off these things that you could do, whether you wanna do them or not, uh you you're leaving your team here with very little option, very few options. Uh and what I've said internally, and again, our team has done a terrific job on this, which I think we all recognize, is give our Board of Selectmen some innovation. Give them, give them the 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 bigger questions here. If we're wrestling with these questions internally, we need to come to you for guidance on them, right? Look at revenues, look at this, it's a sixty thousand dollar impact. My recommendation is you do it, and we and we ask our colleagues in the Board of Finance to to do their analysis over the summer, which is exactly what I think their their chair is saying they'll do, so.
So if we do it and then the analysis comes back that against it?
Then you don't do it, you back it out.
We we owe sixty K in the next six years, right?
Yeah, you back it out. But if you don't do it, the preliminary budget budget that 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 my team submitted has it baked in. And you would be cutting additional C N R. And the cost of cutting them is something that we're, you know, I I I can just tell you that 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 that's a dangerous thing to continue to cut things. That's why these projects are all over budget, because they were deferred. And I just wanna give a shout out to to uh Engineering and T P W and the team. It's municipalities around the country are getting this right. You need to go out and do your design phase work first, because without that, you're not eligible for anything, really. The majority of grants, they want shovel-ready projects, they want you to have your design phase work done. And that's what we're attempting to do, whether we use cash reserves for it uh or in a couple of minor cases, we might bond for it. But that is what's positioning us, and it goes to one of the questions we got from the board about why didn't the proposal of Grant Rider make it in? One of the reasons, and I didn't think of it until after the fact, but you know, unless you've got a whole bunch of these things ready from the design phase, you know, you're not gonna get those grants, right? So while we work on on how can we do a better job uh improving grant revenue, right? Uh widening the net that we cast to to achieve these things, one of the ways you do it is by funding these uh initial design phase projects, right? So whether you want the splash pad or not, I still would recommend that that you proceed just along the lines of what was presented in my budget, because you're gonna have to do something with the pool anyway. So it isn't just about the splash pad. It's it's either that hundred and fifty thousand to go get the design work done, and then we'll go look for grants, where we say essentially we throw up our hands and and we're gonna close the pool when the time comes and we have nothing. I hope that answers those questions.
Yeah, I just have a follow-up question, then we should, we could start moving through. Um so the the page, you don't see the page number in here, but the page where you we show the uh all the projects in the traditional payback, that column. Amy, you know how you flip the the look horizontal to vertical, right? And that includes all the projects for this year up to, and adding up to seven sixteen, when before that would add up to four sixteen. So what I would think is as we go through it, we're gonna see what kind of questions people have on these and prioritize which ones are in here, and we can kind of, wait a minute, not today, but track where we go over that four sixteen to see how critical we are between the four sixteen and seven hundred.
If I could, I I and I I don't wanna get out of my lane, but
No.
but the impact of that analysis is really, to the operating side, is only sixty thousand. The bigger issue is to address uh Board of Finance guidance about the capital, the C I P
Yeah.
and and being over the line, because as you pointed out in some of your questions, we're well over uh the the guidance in terms of the the uh debt service, uh and that's a much bigger impact on everything in the town than than this is a relatively minor, it's it's not that big a deal in terms of uh the numbers relative to what we should have.
Yeah, I I agree, and I maybe we are out of D on the four sixteen, and I don't know that yet, right? But we also haven't decided what we need to leave in reserves and what we're gonna use reserves for versus bonding, and some of these could be moved to reserves, correct? If we, depending on the levels and to Heather's point, we could pay cash for some of these.
Yes.
Okay, I that's that's what I wanted to kinda just clarify. It's not like they're not gonna happen, if they're really a high priority, there is, there is a potential. You know, besides the borrowing pool, there might be a funding source that's reserves too, okay?
We we are showing six hundred and fifty from capital reserve to help fund some of this stuff, so we've already gone there.
Yeah, yep.
Just to kinda fill in the gaps, but so it would just mean using more.
Yep. Got it. Okay.
Any further questions on uh C N R? Uh we're back on our timeline, so.
Are we gonna go through the 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 list?
To you.
Yeah, I think we have some questions.
Yep.
Yeah, we have que- I have some questions on on items in here.
So we use this opportunity to tell people how to get to our budget book? Sorry, C T Taco slash budget. Or if you wanna get going while I do this, because I'm having an issue.
Part of the network infrastructure.
Just go down the list.
Right. Can we increase that money?
We've we've got some funding requests for that. And and while we've got to break the action, I just, one of the things that you saw, uh or maybe in in the budget as posed, is money for the ClearGov, what I know you are familiar with this and Heather probably as well. So next year, uh for the capital side, we'll be transitioning to a completely automated, a new platform called ClearGov that is really, really cool. If anybody's got any interest in learning more about that, I'm happy to uh use I T available and the Budget Team to talk about it, so uh.
That's actually my first question is uh, the budget software?
Yeah, that's the budget software.
It only goes through twenty seven, what happens after twenty seven? Isn't there, isn't like an online system just has a screen?
I believe there's an annual licensing.
Melissa can speak to that, yeah. She's been working on the project.
Yeah, so um the funding, so this is um the cloud-based budget software that um you see up there listed for sixteen thousand four hundred and fifty-two. Um that would cover two modules, the capital budgeting and the digital budget book. Um the the numbers that you see in the two out-years are if we were to add additional modules, there's an operating budget, a personnel um budget module. Um in terms of the annual, that would move um to the operating budget, we would show it there.
And and this was something, I'm just gonna say this, um we've been talking about this, we saw it twenty twenty-one at the twenty, the C C M convention. Um it's called, we've had Amy, Melissa, Amy, the past Town Manager, looked at, looked at it with the Board of Finance. Um Lisa was invited, and there actually was a demo done to the Board of Selectmen. Was were you there? That was during, yeah, when Heather was here. So it was in the last two years. Um and it's a lot of the old municipalities going back to that are using it 'cause it's really a clean way to look at the budget. Maybe we wouldn't need to print the books anymore.
Yeah.
No, you don't need to.
Some people like paper. I like it for, I like it for some things.
I know, I'm like.
Until you have sixteen thousand that you've spent on the budget software, that'll, okay.
Oh, that's true. We don't, yeah, I'm I'm I'd be happy to look at it online. Um so C N R, I uh we wanna open that up. Do we wanna go in order? Do we, people have questions on certain items? I'm I'm paying for however you wanna.
Yeah, we'll take any questions.
Okay, but Curtis, you said you had a question, so you wanna start?
Um I mean, I asked a question on the budget software, so I'm good with that.
Oh, okay.
Um I mean, do you wanna go through all of my questions or just go down a little?
Well, just go, I I mean.
And.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Um I like, I don't know if libraries here, but um furniture replacement from twenty-five through thirty. Um is it, is it really thirty thousand dollars a year to replace the furniture in the library? Um or I think it's a hundred and, a hundred and fifty, I don't remember. A hundred and fifty thousand amount?
Well, it's it's not.
That's ten.
It's taken out for this year, right?
Well, it's the the study is for next year. It's funded for next year, it got pushed out. And it's a comprehensive study of all the public furniture in the library. Because our furniture dates back to two thousand eight of the renovation. And some of it actually dates back to the original library in nineteen eighty-five. So it's time for the furniture to be replaced. And having a comprehensive study of all the furniture in the building will enable us to strategically replace the furniture that needs to be replaced in a cycle. So we can spend small amounts, or thirty thousand dollars each year to replace some of the furniture each year until we replace all of it.
So uh my my question was just, is it a hundred and fifty thousand for furniture at the library? Is that?
That is my best guess, for all the public furniture. This is not any staff office furniture, it's just the public furniture.
And could, there's no ask this year, from what I'm seeing. So it's a, this is an out year.
No, the furniture study got pushed out.
Yeah, yeah.
And the ten, ten, I'm just.
It wasn't asked, we bumped it out because
Yeah, I, okay.
it's on the list of those deferred projects. Um and there is a separate furniture replacement project um for town, other town departments, and that's um basically to address just ongoing needs that we simply cover through, you know, departmental savings and an ad hoc as needed basis. So that was really intended to start a new program to be able to use furniture replacement townwide as well, which we also bumped out till next year, till twenty-six.
Okay.
So.
So this is a, did you have a question?
I do, please.
Yeah, you go.
Um I'm just wondering if, I guess it would be George could speak to the zoning regulations update cost? And also, is the neighborhood planning and small area plans a new ongoing line item and what is that?
Yeah, I was gonna ask the same thing.
Yeah, come on.
Yeah.
Okay, when you want, when you want me to start with?
Uh so let's talk about the ongoing neighborhood planning. So last year, we funded, uh for fifty thousand dollars, the Tariffville Neighborhood Plan. And the neighborhood planning process comes out of your P O C D where um in two thousand and seventeen and now again in two thousand and twenty-four, the award-winning calls for a a series of neighborhood plans in 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 our in our um kind of significant or specialized places. Lee Tog, Tariffville, and Hoskins or the North Village, um West Simsbury and West Street. So these are, these are, these are, these are small area plans where we we look at existing conditions and any kind of um, think about the P O C D at fifty thousand feet. Small area plans are close, thousand square feet, or thousand feet. We get very close to those to those areas. So in Tariffville, we're starting that process, we got R F R F Ps in. We are uh reviewing those R F Ps, they all, they're all more than than what are budgeted. But um the the point is that the P O C D calls for it and and we thought that we should begin, you know, you know, essentially commit to an ongoing planning process for the places we consider special in our community. And so we've put together the, you know, F Y twenty-four through F Y thirty to not institutionalize it, but um to commit to those ongoing planning processes.
What are gonna be part of the planning process? Like what are you looking for R F Ps for Tariffville currently, for example?
So the Tariffville scope, um which uh, you know, which is out on the street and we've received responses. So the Tariffville Neighborhood Process will will be look at Tariffville, Tariffville from um from a land use perspective. So we'll look at, um you know, almost parcel by parcel, uh lot sizes, how those lot sizes relate to to our zoning ordinances. Um we'll look at safety, we'll look at relationships to the town facility in Tariffville, the town park. We'll look at um its relationship to uh the the East Coast Greenway. So all of those, all of those items, what to do on Main Street, for instance. So at at we we don't get to do that as part of the P O C D. This becomes a much more acute planning process. And so um each and every one of those locations, we've talked about, Lee Tog, as we go through the years, and we are funded for that. It would have its own scope, 'cause um we wouldn't carry the same scope over.
Right. So these are potentially things, though, that within those um viewpoints, like you're you're, you know, projects that may wind up on like a C N R or C I P down the road for depending on what they come, what comes out of these uh kind of neighborhood looks, is that?
I thi- I think there is certainly a potential for that, whether um whether we we identify needed infrastructure or um, you know, identify connections to 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 our public spaces that are there, the public realm, so so that's certainly possible.
Or or part of a a department's budget of improvement or something potentially.
Yeah, absolutely. And 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 many, tho- those important stakeholders are are the citizens as well as the town. We have infrastructure or public parks and public things.
So, I I'm, the year that we approved the Tariffville plan, and that was a hundred and fifty thousand, correct?
Yeah.
That we spaced over three years, right?
Tariffville, fifty thousand, I mean, so we got allocated fifty, fifty thousand for for F Y twenty-four.
But I thought the approval was one thirty years.
It was.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so. And a lot of the intention. I think it got split, but sorry.
We did fifty, we we did one fifty and they said it was over three years, right?
I think so.
Yeah.
So, you know, another uh uh part of the intention of that was to look at the economic development potential for that area as well and, you know, sort of using Collinsville as a model for that. Um and it was determined that, you know, this was a three-year process. So with these other, so I am, one, I'm guessing Tariffville now is, that one fifty is paid for and not part of this fifty, fifty, fifty. And so I just wanted to confirm that. And then also, how are you determining um which village to look at next? And are those three years? Uh you know, how does all that look?
Sure, so 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 staff is not gonna make that determination. Um the the Planning Commission will 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 prioritize the ongoing, what would we, what we would do next? So we would work with the Planning Commission to make those determinations.
And you'd have to go out for R F Ps for all of every, each village?
So so we we um, I I I guess there's a scenario where we could we could combine them, but since they're kind of spread out over the years, I think one at a time would probably make sense.
Is there a potential deal with, i- is it more cost effective to use, go after an R F P for all of the villages, but time it out as one bigger project, as opposed to spacing out the projects?
So that's a, that's a question I hadn't, I hadn't really thought about it. And we we kinda had been focused on Tariffville. I think, I think Tariffville is 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 a little bit different. It's bigger in terms of geography, it's bigger in terms of 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 um, just in terms of total total residents. I think that's that's possible going forward, that that we could consider doing that, sure. I'm I I I'm not sure what those cost savings would be, but probably some.
I was just gonna, so I I just, I saw it in here too, the the out-years and I I saw it in the P O C D. But so we did approve one fifty as a as a project last year to just focus on Tariffville. So so I I guess since this is out-years, none of us are agreeing that we're gonna do these in those three years. Their potential to come back to the Board in a really, in twenty, right? I mean, technically, it should come back to us in in twenty-six, twenty-seven and say we wanna do a um um a project for Lee Tog, West Simsbury, whatever, instead of, I'm just saying, the, I think through, I don't know, just seeing it here spread out like that, assuming that we're gonna do that. And I know it's out-year, so we're not committing to it. I think it needs to come back as a as a proposal, maybe next year or the year after for doing those.
Well, we're committing to fifty thousand this year, but if we commit to that and we start it and then future boards are obligated to it or it stops, right? So we're, because it's fifty thousand each each year.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah, but we did, we did the one fifty, we committed to that last year.
So is that fifty?
This is the second installment.
Second installment, is that correct?
Yeah.
So so let's make sure that we have a hundred and fifty, 'cause that's not my understanding.
Yeah.
Well, why, we just missed. No, we s- we s- We split it into three, so it was a hundred and fifty total that was then split fifty, fifty, fifty. So this is year two.
Cause we, cause the money split over.
So this is, this fifty has been committed to already?
So it'll come back.
The first fifty that was funded in this year.
Yes, second.
This would be the next fifty.
So really, a new project, wouldn't it be until fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven?
So George.
Yes, sir.
What's the total, like the R F D, what did they come back for, for quote?
Sure, sure. So the the R F Ps range um between eighty-nine thousand dollars and a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars over seven submissions.
Okay, and we've got fifty earmarked already that hasn't been spent? Is that, just so I'm fine with it.
That's correct. We have not spent that fifty. That's right. And surely, we would, we we would, we would work to to reduce that scope and you, no matter, to whatever level we'll fund it, we'll 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 do a project. And and if we have, if we don't have the um, you know, the full hundred or or whatever the number is, we'll we'll work on that scope and and reduce it as 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 necessary, you know what I mean?
So going to Heather's question, the one fifty, right? We, I know we approved it last year, I think we used our book.
You approved fifty.
So so so, yeah.
Pardon me?
You approved fifty last year.
But overall, we we said it was a three-year project. So yes, this financially, we approved fifty and we said we'd pay it over three years, right? I think we're thinking when we approved it, we'd said it was a hundred and fifty over three years. Um so the question, I and I, this may have been asked, is, do we need a hundred and fifty dollars for, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this study? I mean, we we we, that was the estimate last year.
It was. And so we won't. We won't, but 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 again, my my under, a couple of things. Um when we, when we, when we put this together, you know, the 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 direction was to kind of lay out th- those out-years. And so that's why those out-years for the in, you know, the individual studies are at fifty thousand. To give you the sense that I'm gonna be coming back
Right, right.
to fund an ongoing policy process. Um we had, we had estimated a Tariffville process of fifty thousand, fifty thousand, fifty thousand to the tune of a hundred. That would include kind of full, um, the that third out-year would be a kind of a full zoning rewrite, whether it's a form-based code, but just for Tariffville only. Um but again, we were only funded for fifty. And then I've gotta come back to you and ask for fifty again this year and then next year and then next year.
Okay, so you're asking us for fifty to continue the Tariffville project, the way I'm seeing it?
That, that, ultimately, that 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 is, I I had hoped that I would be asking for a new project, but because of the numbers that we're seeing is that we're gonna, we would need to apply that to Tariffville.
Okay, so that's really all we're being asked for today.
Sure.
And potentially, if you need more, 'cause you said it could go up to one twenty-nine, next year, we would pay part of that fifty. In the, it, next year, we would, we would cover the, yeah, fifty this year to continue the study.
I can almost guarantee you, we will keep that price below a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, but it still will need to come back to us to talk about these other communities, to decide if we wanna do them. That's the bottom line is my my ask.
Yeah, and and I understand that and and we're happy to do that. That's that's great.
And so Tariffville, the timeline is still looking that for you to complete the project and come with us um with a presentation or whatever we will see of what resulted and changes for zoning for Tariffville. Um that will be ne- next year or?
I think we'll be able to complete the entire project in in um, in in twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
So on the zoning side, I think the second question was, we've been zoning, uh a zoning, a zoning rewrite we are recommending. Yeah, um zoning ordinance has not been, zoning regulation's not been fully reviewed in 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 decade or more. It uh, it is a challenging document. We find with errors and omissions and confusion, which I think hurts, uh which hurts the public at large. It hurts our business community. Um it it's a confusing document. There's a, there's a whole host of reasons that I could run you through. Uh we've got a assigned section that uh fails to uh meet or conform to recent Supreme Court decisions. That is a significant piece of this. We have um section references that are that are really all over the place. We have sta- we've got recent state planning law that directs certain changes in zoning regulations to remove certain items and to include certain items. We've got to be able to do that. It's a document that really needs a community-wide rewrite. Um and I would, I would anticipate kind of a real public process with members of the business community and the and the and the development community being involved. I don't know that I see a lot of changes um to how we do business, but it's it's just very, it's it's very confusing. It's a very confusing document. It's very frustrating for staff to deal with on a on a daily basis. We ask a lot of questions, we discuss every item because it's, hold it, this isn't straightforward. Um the number is because we, uh Avon is in the middle of their rewrite right now and um that they're spending over a hundred thousand dollars on that process.
I'll link the process to you.
I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a twelve to sixteen dollar process.
So George, the cost here is, again, for an outside consultant to support that process, does it fund the other hearings or other costs associated with that or?
I think that's, that's all inclusive. It's all inclusive. Staff is gonna do a lot of heavy lifting as well as part of that process.
That's what I'm expecting, yeah, okay.
Uh uh absolutely, yeah.
So we just uh voted to adopt a, you know, housing advisory. How would that affect this zoning document?
Good.
So any type of um, so they'd be, certainly would be a stakeholder. And so if there are zoning fixes or zoning um zoning regulation ideas that are housing-related, we we would love to incorporate those into as as part of that process.
'Cause I wouldn't, I would hate to have this, you know, you go down this lane and and create, and then have this be in conflict with what is, okay.
No. No, that, your 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 new committee would need to be in the room, obviously, on on this process, yeah.
I I was gonna jump to Public Works. Tom's bored back there, he wants me to ask him questions.
Wait, one, one police question, if we're just going in the door.
George is like, don't ask me twice.
Well, I wasn't going in the door, I was just shooting.
Okay, okay. Okay, she's, she jumped, okay.
I jumped, because I have a police question too, but I want Tom look.
She missed Tom, apparently.
He looked bored and I. He looked bored and I.
Okay.
Um, so, few, few questions, are you gonna come to the table or sit back there?
I hope I didn't yawn or anything, I did, I'm not bored.
Okay, so.
Are you checking your horoscope?
So that, some of this may, you have to stick with me the way I think, some of this may mel- meld together, right? Um, so I see the iron horse landscaping on here, sixty thousand this year. Last year we took it off and we funded thirty thousand dollars, cause there was a one-twenty ask last year for the iron horse landscaping median.
I believe that was cut.
It was cut, so that's what I'm saying, it was cut, and we funded thirty K, I thought, and some, no.
No, no money, no money for iron horse.
Okay, no money, Lisa's saying, did we have money, I remember thirty K, but.
There was for pollinators, so there was about forty thousand funded for pollinators, which could have been used in part for the, but, but, Tom is correct, it wasn't dedicated for the.
Okay. Okay, so we have forty thousand for pollinators somewhere, right? This is asking, the, the description is for the, for the thing, so we cut it last year, we didn't think it was critical, right, now it's back. So I'm questioning whether it's critical again, because we, we decided not to do it last year.
It's, it, it's so odd, because often planning is not, you know, front and center for public works. Uh, what I would tell you is iron horse, as we talked a little bit earlier about performing art center, for those of in the region that only come in for the concerts, is really, um, the storefront that people see of Simsbury. You know, when people come in, um, for the concerts, right now, that is not a very attractive set of island and landscaping. Um, what I would say is if the decision is not to fund this, maybe we, we funded it at a, a de minimis level where I would suggest we bring it at least back to just grass, cut everything down and bring it back to grass. It, it's starting to get to the point that, you know, there's invasives in there, would not be, um, the, the plants that are there, I think have just, um, it, it's just not a very attractive landscaping right now for an area that I think is so important to the town.
So, um, does it, does, uh, who owns mowing that or taking care of it, do you guys or do you guys?
Uh.
Oh, you, you guys do?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's.
Some guys.
None of them.
Well, I was pointing back there, so, so.
It was me, I was like, nah.
Are you, are you?
No, I was like, really, no.
Let the record show, they pointed at each other.
Public, public, public works contracts to mow against the climate.
Okay, so just say, let's just say it's grass, it gives people more of an opportunity to have free concerts by sitting up a median fair.
Right.
Grass, right, okay, that's, so, con, so going against that, I do wanna ask you a couple questions, because.
Yeah. I have one question still on medians.
Okay.
Will Barbara Cove, the construction, impact this median if we start to work on it prior to construction, which is imminent at this point?
I, I don't think it would have a significant impact, we'd have to coordinate to make sure, I, I, I believe as part of Barbara Cove, they're gonna, uh, make an opening in one of the islands.
Correct.
You know, that's sixty feet of the entire project, so it's not a problem.
So since you're up here, I'm gonna ask you a question that, so, and, and it's also to Mark too, like we're saying that these are really critical projects, right? So, it, it, the projects from last year, are they all done? Like, I, I was, who was I talking to about the dredging of town forests?
That was me.
Yo, you said that, is that been done or not done?
Not done.
And that was a C N R item, right? So, I'm just asking how, I guess the question for us later is how critical are all of these projects, um, if they're gonna wait another year or two? So the, the dredging of town forests, these are the only ones I could remember from last year, and then the Medicom, did we do that? The Medicom wall, remember we voted on that last year, that was forty thousand, is that done, or is that?
Yes. That's, that's.
Oh, it's done, okay, I was gonna drive over there, and I, I didn't get over there. So that's just a question, you know, are all these projects gonna get done if we fund them this year, um, for the, just in general?
Yeah, and what I would say typically with, um, C N R projects, um, we, we generally have three years to get them done. Uh, some of the projects are, are easy, um, and short, and other projects take more time. The Medicom, for example, we, we got that done this fall.
Okay.
It was pretty straightforward. I think, uh, I'm, I'm trying to think if there's any significant C N R projects still in the books, I mean, usually, um, as soon as a referendum passes on a lot of the things, like the vehicle purchases, the equipment, um, I can promise you my staff who's behind me, they're calling on, on the fifth to get everything ordered so that we can get it in as soon as we can.
Okay, thank you.
What's the de minimis back to mowing lawns for iron horse instead, that you mentioned that you could do instead of the full landscaping projects?
Well, what I, what I would say is if, if it's a project that's not gonna be funded in the next five to ten years, if you're gonna continue to defer it, because again, it's, it's a change, I would probably look to spend money to actually take out all of the plants there and just topsoil and seed it and just manage it as grass.
What would be, do you have a, a thought in mind about arranging what that investment is?
Just completely off the top of my head.
Off the ball, yeah.
Maybe twelve thousand.
And the forty, the, the pollinator money, is that Parks and Rec money, is that your money?
It's, it's Parks and Rec.
Okay, so we couldn't use it for.
There's room up here, Tom.
All the Toms up there. Um, okay, so, any other, I'm done with you, done with you. Unless anybody else is in this.
When the, it's, it's a can, nobody asks, and nobody asks him before he leaves, can, can you do it for fifty?
He looked tired and now he gonna do that. Do what for fifty?
Do the landscaping.
Yeah, right, I mean, we, we got a question about the de minimis, but, but, right, can you do it for fifty?
Is there a better price that you're coming on the landscaping?
Again, what, what we're, what we're looking at right there is being essentially designed by our pollinator people. Um, so I guess the question is, do we combine that with the current pollinator project, would be one way to maybe find some savings?
Is there a way that we could do it, um, maybe where um, with assistance from all of our master gardeners we have, gardening clubs?
This, this is, this is, yeah, right now, this is only for getting the plants and getting the plants installed. We had originally proposed this, even though we have some great volunteers in town, I had suggested a um, portion of the funding be used to have a design professional to make sure we had a bidable document so that we could do it that way. Instead, we will probably be, uh, it'd be a much smaller, management would be more put on, on the town staff.
Well, I wanna make a plug for my idea that I got laughed at about from somebody, but last year I brought up the, um, I had Googled, looked, looked it up online. Um, mu- multiple municipalities do like an adopt a median program, and either a business or a organization takes on a piece and they own it and they have to make it to some nice standard.
Do that on the trail, don't we, on iron horse, can we adopt a section of them?
Sorry, me? Somebody, yeah, you told me that, right?
There is, there's, there's adopt miles on the trail, and then our beautification community takes care of most of our traffic islands.
Yeah, we do.
So that is, is that?
Something that happens, I think, actually, no.
Not on the median.
I don't think so.
Not, not on iron horse, they've always stayed away from iron horse, just because it was such a large, um, it, it's, it's bigger than it looks, and, um.
It's a big plot. Yeah. And we're getting the, just to plug the D A R, George Wash, is it the George Washington Memorial being there?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So just wanted to give them a plug, they're pretty excited about that. Um, okay, let's move, move on to C N R question.
Can I just ask one more question on this, and not to, not to belabor the, the point, but, um,
Oh, you're sure, 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 no, I'm sorry, can.
If we did nothing this year, it's still being maintained, it's not like it's getting overgrown or something else, so the other stuff is starting, and this is just a, uh, change, um,
That's, that's right.
you know, how it looks and feels to adapt to, it just, it's a, it's a renovation project of, of, of the median there.
It, it, exactly.
So if we defer it this year, it's not like it's gonna get overgrown or there's a problem, uh, we can push it out.
No, it, it, it's gonna continue to, you know, reflect its age and the fact that, you know, it's, it's, um, it, but it's not gonna have a significant difference if we don't do it this year or the next year.
But if you think that we're not gonna do it next year, then you'd recommend that we plan to turn it back to grass?
Yeah, if we're not gonna get to this in the next five, ten years, we might as well just, you know, the end result's gonna be, is gonna be, end up being grass, and it would certainly save us effort, and I think we look cleaner the sooner we do that.
Great, okay, thank you.
That's a, that's a good idea, um, okay, um.
I think we might be able to wrap up C N R, but lunch is here, so if we can wrap it up, then we can take it back.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm. Yeah, that's what I was hoping, you guys wanna try to get rid of this?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, kept, um, Curtis, no question.
We're here.
I, I'm, maybe, maybe it's just informational, um, how many times do we use tasers? Just because it, there's like, it's, I mean, it's, it's.
You're saying we should deploy one today?
I mean, is there?
So we train, we train every year if anybody wants to come out and, and look at that. But, uh, it, it varies, I would say we have physically used it, cause there's a couple different ways to use it. Um, one is just bringing the taser out, and that is a level of force that is considered using it, it's not discharging anything from it.
Right.
So we've, we've done that several times. Um, I believe it's been a total of three times maybe in the last little five years where we have moved cells. Where the projectiles have, have, have been sent out.
As, as a non-lethal way of taking.
As a, as a less than lethal, yes, correct, yeah.
Do they need to be replaced as soon as the taser is, like, like, if it's deployed? I, I don't know, cause apparently I've never replaced, um.
Sure. The citizens police academy.
Love to help you.
Thursday, Thursday night for ten weeks, I'm with the citizens academy.
I know, well, John, trust me, I live with, he's plugging that, um.
Yes. So, our newest ones that we replaced, uh, last year or the year before have multiple cartridges built into it.
Okay.
So the, the unit itself doesn't need to be replaced, it would be very similar to, whatever is being shot out of that needs to be replaced after.
Got it.
Okay. Um, what, other questions on C N R?
Uh.
I, I got a question just on the Apple Barn criticality, yup, come on, the Apple Barn, um, how critical it is and do we use it that much?
Uh, yeah, yes, critical, and yes, we do use it, um, that building is, we have not shown that building any love in a long time, uh, because of the C N, intergenerational
Yeah. Okay.
community center that we, it's kind of floating on the back of the plan, so.
Yeah.
We deferred any requests for any major repairs because we thought it was gonna get knocked down and possibly be a dissite for that thing. It's why we, it's why we've been deferring, the wa- the water's coming into the ceiling, we've been tarring the roof in a bunch of different places. Uh, with the water coming into the ceiling, the carpet's now ruined in a lot of spots, I mean Diana's groups use it, it, it's, we're still using it for rec programs, we use it all summer long for summer camps.
Yeah, okay. Cabs grow, so.
It, it's, if we're gonna continue to, to not do anything with that site for the next half decade to a decade, if, if, if nothing else, the roof and the floors need to be done now, there's water, there's water coming into the building, it's compromised. So, that's, that's, that's sort of answered your question.
Um, with your irrigation replacement, various fields and parks?
Yep.
What's on the list for this year?
Uh, so, with current funding, cause we've do, we've been doing this for three years now, so we just completed that, that large field at Memorial Park, Memorial Park over the winter. The plan is to do little, uh, two little league fields this summer.
Two little league fields, summer, correct.
This summer, um, do, finish Memorial Park with, with the other two little, two to three little league fields. And then I believe we're gonna go to Weetog, then Curtis, and then eventually end up at Simsbury Meadows, if you still want.
Are, um, are any of the schools, like Henry James, um, those fields, are they included in this program?
So we, we budget for town properties, we do have, we haven't budgeted for school properties, that would fall under their, their, for their um, capital needs, which they have, which we haven't, we, we've made it known that those issues over there, we've done some, some repairs to the pumps at the high school inn, and, uh, pumps and valves, and sprinkle heads at the high school backfield, and we replaced the, what, the pump at Memorial, I mean, Henry James, I call Memorial, Henry James. Within the last three years, so those, there's been some minor repairs made that, that we've, that they, their budgets covered, but no large capital, you know, like we're talking whole system replacements, and those are some of the oldest systems we have in town as well, a lot of these things have been in the ground for twenty-five to thirty-five years. You have, the, the equipment just starts to fall apart, valves break off, metal valves break off, so they corrode. Henry James, the, is a, probably, I was talking to Curtis the other day, Henry James is a bigger project, I think, to maximize the use of that field, it, it, we, we need to bring in a consultant, the, the town needs to bring in a consultant landscape architect, what's the best use of that field going forward? Right now, we have three irrigated, three irrigated fields over there, you could probably fit six, five to six full-size fields over there, if it's configured right and you have the irrigation for it. Um, a lot of people see that first field when you walk off the, the back parking lot, that's, that's not an irrigated field, that's basically a sand pit, because you can't get anything to grow there. The irrigated, there's one irrigated field in the back and two to, two to the far right, those fields will hold up. But you have a lot of empty space there that could be better utilized for athletic fields, if, if we choose not to do another, another build out somewhere else in town.
So when you replace, um, irrigation, I would imagine the life expectancy is longer than what we're looking at now, when it's on a different plan.
Yeah, the piping, yeah, there's new, there's new piping and things like that, the valves last longer, I mean, a, a new system should last as long as years. Tom, while you're here, um, I have a question on the, the, um, pickleball courts. Yes. Um, I know we submitted a question to you, um, so, I, I, my understanding is that we put two fifty aside for it? Three fifty. Three, three fifty, so this would be four hundred fifty thousand for pickleball courts. Um, so, what's, what kind of pickleball courts are they, are they separate, each court is separate, or is it like a tennis court that is just? So it would be six courts within, like Simsbury Farms, for instance, is four courts side by side, all within one fence. At, at Tariffill Park, what you'd have, you'd have two rows of three courts, uh, inside one larger fence, so it's, imagine like a rectangle, so you'd have three in the back, three in the front with a small fence, it kind of dividing the end lines from, from the back, um, and then you'd have ten feet between each court, um, gate entrances on two sides. Um, but that footprint would fit, we're gonna make that same footprint that has two tennis courts over there now, we're gonna add probably four to six feet on two different sides, and then it'll allow us to fit six in there comfortably. Now, does that, does that include anything else, or is it just the courts? No, so we've, the town, the, the board, previous boards have funded a new pavilion over there, and they've also funded a new playground. Um, so all of those projects are being held up due to the flood plain mapping issue we're having with the Army Corps of Engineers that should be resolved later this year. Okay, so the reason I had these, these questions is, we're putting in, um, six, no, we're putting four pickleball courts in at Hot Meadow, and our total cost is like seventy-three thousand. Yeah. So like, that delta is like five times, I know it's more expensive for the town. So we're demolishing too, we have to demolish the existing site. We took down the tennis court, we took down the tennis court. Yeah, and we're doing post-tension concrete cords, which will, you know, what's there now, I mean, you can see in a good example, it seems very farms are asphalt courts, Tariffill Park are asphalt courts, Henry James Courts are asphalt courts. You can see the crack, any of those, if you go, go there right now, any of those courts are cracked all up and down. Um, the, the courts at Tariffill got so bad from the cracking, it was float, they're asphalt, they're, just like your driveway, it floats, and over there, we have, you know, we water, climate change, things like that. So it cracks more significantly, you just can't keep up on the crack, on the crack filling. Henry James, they just redid those courts a few years ago, and they're already, they're awful, to be honest, they, they've done a lot of crack filling. The, uh, high school, redid the high school courts with post-tension concrete, they're beautiful, they will last. That's what we wanna do at Tariffill, it, it's gonna be more expensive, but it's a better investment for the town in the long run, those courts, we won't have to touch those courts other than putting, uh, maybe a new paint surface on them after fifteen years if it wears, ten to fifteen years if it wears out, but that's the only repairs we're gonna do over there, we're not gonna have to do crack filling. Post-tension concrete, if you're not aware, it's like six inches of concrete with rebar in it, it moves as one big piece, if it moves at all, it, it's not moving like an, like your driveway or those asphalt tennis courts where it's breaking, you know, in little pieces everywhere. Mm-hmm, so, but, so, eighty thousand dollars per court, it just, to me, that just seems like a lot, um. That was a solid number, we got from two, two well-respected vendors who do a lot of kind of good work, municipal work. Uh, they had, one of them was three hundred and fifteen thousand, the other was three fifty thou, three hundred and fifty thousand, that was, again, three years ago at this point. So we're, we're figuring in inflation, permitting fees, and that's where, you know, when this, this flood plain mapping gets approved this fall, we don't wanna have to come back to you again next spring and ask for more money, and then put this thing another year behind, another year behind schedule. This was a high pro- high priority project, not only for, for the board, but I think for a lot of residents in town, or, you know, nobody wants it more than me, cause like, we're, we're all getting phone calls. Wendy gets phone calls, I get phone calls, the town manager's office gets phone calls, when are they going in, we're excited about it. Like, one of the most popular growing sports in the country, I mean, that's why, that's why Hot Meadows doing it. We wanna get these in, and we don't wanna, we may not need that hundred thousand, but I, I don't wanna come back to you and have to wait another year or more to get that in. And again, these things are only gonna get more expensive, we're trying to be proactive, I mean, my, my best hope is it comes in at three hundred and fifty thousand, we can get it done and not have to spend a penny of that and give it back, it's just, you can leave it back, yeah, give it back to you, but, you know, we're trying to be proactive and make sure we can get this done within a reasonable amount of time, and now we're gonna be four years out.
Yeah, and we, this.
From the next construction season, it's, it's right.
Did you get the final approval, the Army Corps as an engineer, where are we with that?
We haven't, so, Tom, why don't you, you?
I don't know, you're doing good, you're talking. They're talking rebar, I was just gonna come in.
I'm working their side of the street if I talk about that, so.
Actually, I'm gonna throw this one to Adam, he's, I mean.
Super. Um, yeah, so.
You're like a triangle.
Yeah.
The last guidance we got, uh, from FEMA is that the new maps will be adopted sometime November, December of this year. Um, you know, it's a long process for them, there's a lot of public input, there's appeal periods that they have to go through, so we're hope, we're hopeful that by the end of this year those maps will be approved and, um, then, you know, we adopt them. And the key there is that right now the maps show the floodway, which is basically a no-build area within the park. So, by waiting, that whole floodway line is better defined and not within our work area, and that allows us to do the work. Uh, without ex- extensive study and permitting.
So shovels we're looking at next year?
Next frame, hold for it, yeah.
Yeah, and, and this was a big project, it was a, we, it was an ARPA-funded project, when we heard from the public, there was a lot of public support for this project, we all, the old board, we all approved it, um, plan to move it, we've been, this has been a big talking selling point that we've had to push, pull back a little. So, you know, now that we know the date, we might wanna push that out and let people know publicly, um, that it's, you know, when it's gonna happen. Um, but I just wanted to put that in for a plug for that, anyway. Does anybody else have any?
Does that mean we're the young board, if that was the, the old board?
Yeah.
The, um.
No, this is still the old board, some are the old board.
The project, so, I, Curtis was talking about the, the cost and expense and, and that, is this a, a revenue for us, do we, you know, get fees for leagues and, and that, and what does that look like? I don't know if you have any thoughts about that.
So, yeah, we, uh, we, we, it's not, it's not gonna be the revenue stream that's gonna pull us all to the top by any means, but, but we are doing court reservations at Simsbury Farms, we restarted that this year, and. and uh six dollars for an hour, people people do it, I mean, people are reserving time, we did league, we had um league play up there, we do instructional lessons.
Sure.
I would think with a with a six-court complex, we we have a chance to hold more tournaments that would draw people, again, draw people to Simsbury.
Mm-hmm.
Not not only residents, but, you know, uh weekend tournaments, that kind of thing. So there would be some, it would be some revenue coming in, it's not, we're not talking, you know, tens of thousands of dollars by any stretch, but, you know, possibly up to ten a year, maybe.
That's a good question, cause a lot of people I know are playing in Bloomfield and paying quite a quite a chunk of change for the summer to play outdoors and dedicate a courts.
Yeah.
Well, I was thinking we're charging, you know, three-year-olds for the splash pad when that goes down.
Let's charge. Yeah, I was charging. Yeah, you could bump up your visitation fee.
Kid, you cut your teeth.
Um, almost at twelve thirty, I have a question, quick question, the playgrounds, the playgrounds, since you're since you're chatting. You know, we we have money every year that we do for playgrounds, will that ever end, I I guess is the.
It 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 eventually will go down, but it's not gonna, cause right now, we're still building up to that, we haven't finished
Yeah.
The 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 small neighborhood playgrounds, but we're also bumping that up because we have to start stocking the money money away for the Rotary Park playground.
Where? The road, and the road. Yeah, okay, that's.
And that's gonna be in partnership with with the Rotary Club, but it's not, we're, you know, when that playground in, I think we've estimated four years is probably the end of the life of that one.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we're already been partnering and having meetings with them, but that playground, it's it, you're probably talking six hundred thousand, maybe even seven hundred thousand by the time we get there cause of the the rubber surfacing down there, it's twenty to twenty-five dollars a square foot just for the surfacing.
Yeah.
That's gonna be at least half the budget of that playground down there. Um, so we're, they're kind of, we're kind of starting to put conceptuals together, hopefully by the end of the summer, we'll have some conceptuals what that might look like that they're gonna start using in their fundraising efforts, but we don't wanna come back to you and say say with a with an ask for three hundred fifty thousand dollars or at one time, we're trying to build that money up. I think I did put one line item later, so we build up, we build up, and then there's one larger item. But we haven't finished the neighborhood playgrounds yet, like, we're gonna do Weetog, we have money right now for Weetog, that's gonna hopefully gonna get done this year. Uh, and then we will move to uh Terriffill and Weetog, I think this is this is the second year of, we bumped, we switched Terriffill and Weetog because of the floodplain issue, so. This year's funding will go toward the Terriffill one when that's done, and then we have Meadow Pond um after Weetog and Terriffill, and then we circle back. Everything's kind of going toward that, but we're also putting that money toward the repairs, we're putting that money toward the large purchases of of surfacing, like the mold and things like that, that's gone way up. Um, but the majority of it is construction costs and renovations for for playgrounds, and like I said, we're we're using that account to build up for.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so.
Okay, a- anymore right now for C N R, before we take a break, almost at twelve thirty, which is good timing, okay?
I don't know. Take a break.
So you want it one o'clock, I mean, we're gonna take a, how long of a break are we gonna take?
An hour?
Yeah, one o'clock, how's that sounds, everybody?